All right, good evening. Before we get started, I'd like to welcome Reverend Patrick Avent from InterQuest Church who'll lead us in our invocation.
Let's just all close our eyes and just breathe. As we breathe, just let the day drop away. So we're gonna let go of the worldly way and all of our agendas, and we turn to God. So just breathe and begin to feel God's presence in this place. Father, we ask a blessing upon this meeting this night. We ask a blessing upon this city council. We ask a blessing upon Mayor Lockwood. As these stand forth to steward this city, we ask that they be guided in wisdom, in strength, and in love. Bless this city council and bless this city, Father. That will be done.
Thank you. I'd like to call the regular meeting of the Milton City Council for Monday, July 19th, 2010 to order. Will the City Clerk please call roll and make the general announcements?
Good evening, Mayor, Council. On behalf of the called roll for the July 19th, 2010 regular meeting, however, I would like to remind those in attendance to please silence all cell phones at this time. Additionally, those attending the meeting who would like to provide public comment either during the public hearings or during the call for public comment, you are required to complete a public comment card prior to speaking on an item. There is no public comment for consent agenda items or items over first presentation. Those calls are to be taken in the order noted speaker cards were received by the city's clerk staff prior to beginning of tonight's meeting. All speakers will identify themselves by name, address, and organization if applicable. When you hear the bell, you have thirty seconds to complete your remarks. The city council may allow public comment on either an agenda item or general public comment from a representative of such an organized group or association, provided, however, that such an individual shall file a memorized affidavit that they have been afforded to speak on behalf of resettled invitation on a form provided by the city clerk prior to the event of the item being called. Demonstration of any sort within the chamber is prohibited, so if you frankly may need applause, cheering, throwing, or dialogue with any person speaking, please show the same respect to the person speaking that you will expect to receive yourself. Anyone in violation will be asked to leave. As I call roll, please confirm your attendance. Mayor Joe Lockwood?
Here.
Councilmember Carrie Carlin?
Here.
Councilmember Julie Sonner Bailey?
Here.
Councilmember Bill Lusk?
Here.
Councilmember Burke Hewitt?
Here.
Councilmember Joe Longoria?
Here.
And Councilmember Alatard is out of town on work-related business but wishes as well tonight. Would everyone please rise for the better of the occasion?
Congratulations to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, I want to welcome everybody here tonight. And the City Clerk will please sound the next item.
Next item is approval of meeting agenda, June Agenda Item Number 10-1176.
Has there any other items that need to be considered?
We'd like to remove the executive session.
Actually, no, we're gonna keep it. I'm gonna add to it. That changed in the last couple minutes.
Sorry.
Just leave it as it is.
Okay, do we have a motion and a second on the meeting agenda?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the meeting agenda.
I'll second it.
I have a motion by Councilmember Hewitt, a second by Councilmember Thurman. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. Okay, next item is public comment. Public comment is a time for citizens to share information with the mayor and city council and to provide input and opinions on any matter that is not scheduled for its own public hearing during today's meeting. There's no discussion on items on the consent agenda or first presentation from the public or from council. Each citizen who chooses to participate in public comment must complete a comment card and submit it to the city clerk. Please remember, this is not in time to engage the mayor or members of the city council in the conversation. When your name is called, please come forward and speak into the microphone stating your name and address for the record, and you'll have five minutes for remarks. Do we have any public comment?
No, sir, we do not.
Move on to the consent agenda. Clerk, please sound the next item.
Our first item is approval of the June 21st, 2010 regular meeting minutes, Agenda Item Number 10-1177. Next, we have approval of financial statements for period ending June 2010, Agenda Item Number 10-1178. Our third item is approval of an agreement between the City of Milton and NRCS for a culvert repair, Agenda Item Number 10-1179. Our next item is approval of an intergovernmental agreement between the City of Milton and Marta for the use of offset funds for pedestrian improvements at intersections along Webb Road and Deerfield Parkway. This is Agenda Item Number 10-118. Our fifth item is approval of an intergovernmental agreement between the City of Milton and Marta for the use of offset funds for the installation of street lighting along Deerfield Parkway from Webb Road to State Route 9, Agenda Item Number 10-1181. Next, approval of an intergovernmental agreement between the City of Milton and Marta for the use of offset funds for the milling and use of the scene of Webb Road from Morris Road to Deerfield Parkway. This is Agenda Item Number 10-1182. Next, we have approval of an agreement between the City of Milton and Birmingham United Methodist Church and Special Events Network for the Eka movies on September 11th, 2010, Agenda Item Number 10-1183. Our final item is approval of a fee scheduled for the 2010 Milton Roundup released by the City of Milton Parks and Recreation Department. This is Agenda Item Number 10-1184.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the consent agenda as read.
And I'll second the motion.
Okay, I've got a motion by Councilmember Lusk, a second by Councilmember Bailey. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. Let's move on to reports and presentations. Will the City Clerk please sound the next item?
A proclamation recognizing MDA Firefighter Appreciation Month, presented by Mayor Joe Lockwood.
For fifty-six years, firefighters have been orchestrating annual fill-the-boot drives to help advance the Muscular Dystrophies Association's life-saving mission. The public service resulting from this labor of love is nothing short of incredible. The effort has raised more than $425 million nationally to help MDA speed research seeking treatments and cures for muscle diseases, whilst simultaneously helping MDA provide families affected by neuromuscular diseases with unparalleled healthcare services. Over the last three years, the City of Milton Department has collected $112,000 from generous citizens for local children and adults fighting muscular dystrophy. In 2009, the department raised $48,085, which was the highest in the metro Atlanta area and the third largest state of Georgia. This year, the City of Milton will be collecting on August 13th, 20th, 27th, as well as September 3rd and 5th. Please show your support of MDA and our brave firefighters by visiting one of the collection sites and helping us fill the boot. Tom Barfield, the Executive Director of the Atlanta B Office of MDA, as well as Angela Brown, the Fundraising Coordinator in Atlanta B, are excited to support the department as they embark on another successful boot drive and are here with us in our audience. Also, please welcome Chief Bob Edgar and members of the City of Milton Fire Department. And I am going to come down and read this proclamation. I'd like to give the firefighters, Bob and representatives here. Have the rooms cleared out? Whereas dedicated and selfless firefighters in Milton provide vital and life-saving services to the citizens of their community and whereas at a moment's notice, these men and women risk their lives subduing fires and rescuing those trapped in infernos, as well as saving citizens from emergencies that could have been deadly situations; and whereas Georgia firefighters contribute significantly to the continued well-being of Georgians through their outstanding commitment to community service, their sense of duty and responsibility is evidenced by the hundreds of volunteer hours and annual boot drives to collect funds to help fight muscular dystrophy. And whereas for over fifty years, firefighters throughout Georgia and the nation have worked with MDA to eradicate the muscular dystrophies, Lou Gehrig's disease, my asthenia, gravus, and other neuromuscular diseases; and whereas many of Milton's most deserving citizens have benefited from the funds raised by firefighters in the Fill the Boot campaign, and these public servants make invaluable contributions to our community and all tasks they perform. Now, therefore, we, the mayor and the city council, City of Milton hereby dictate and proclaim July through September as MDA firefighter appreciation time in the City of Milton, Georgia, and encourage all citizens of Milton, Georgia to recognize and support the efforts of these firefighters on behalf of MDA, given under my hand and seal the City of Milton, Georgia on this nineteenth date of July 2010. At this point, I would like to... Actually, Tom. Thank you very much. How are you, Joe?
Thank you very much.
Angela.
Thank you very much.
I'm presenting this to you on behalf of all of our partners. Thank you.
Is there a record? If you can just kind of line up basically somewhere over here. Come this way.
Thank you very much. Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Martha.
We got a little wide-angle lens here.
Yeah, I know.
Pretty much.
Okay. Pretty much his shoulder to the left.
Okay. We had to...
Everybody come in.
That's right.
Yeah, keep coming in.
There we go. Okay. One, two, three. Let me do it one more time. One, two, three. One more time. Make sure your hands up. One, two, three.
Thank you.
Thank you all for all your good leadership.
The City Clerk, please sound the next item.
Our next item is a proclamation recognizing Americans with Disabilities Act, presented by Mayor Joe Lockwood.
Okay, I want to welcome, first off, I want to welcome Ann Coggins, the Chair of the Milton Disability Awareness Committee, and the members of MDA that are in the audience here. And I'm gonna step down again and read this next proclamation. And then the room will end. That's all right. Have a chair.
We nominated you.
You know, everybody will get to come up.
We don't paint the picture.
On July 26th, 1990, President George H. Bush signed into law Americans with Disabilities Act, ADA, to ensure the civil rights of people with disabilities. To ensure the civil rights of people with disabilities, the legislation established a clear and comprehensive national mandate for the elimination of discrimination against individuals with disabilities. Whereas the ADA has expanded opportunities for Americans with disabilities by reducing barriers, engaging perceptions, increasing full participation in community life. However, the full promise of the ADA will only be reached if public entities remain committed in their efforts to fully implement ADA. Whereas on the twentieth anniversary of the Americans with Disabilities Act, we, the City of Milton, celebrate and recognize the progress that has been made by reaffirming the principles of equality and inclusion and recommending our efforts to reach full ADA compliance. Whereas the National ADA Symposium is spearheading the 2010 by 2010 Campaign in recognition of the passage of this landmark civil rights legislation. The National ADA Symposium is inviting state and local governments, schools, colleges, business and organizations, service providers, and advocates to join in its proclamation of recommitment to the spirit of the ADA and hopes to collect 2010 proclamations prior to the end of 2010. Now, therefore, we, the mayor and the city council, the City of Milton hereby join with other cities across the nation in claiming our recommitment to the Spirit of Americans with Disabilities Act on this historic anniversary of the act, given under my hand and seal the City of Milton, Georgia on the nineteenth day of 2010. So now you guys will come forward. You guys want to come down and take a picture?
Two, three. One, two, three. One, two.
Appreciate it very much. It's good to see you all.
I'll let more to see if that's...
She said eighteen is what they have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You see?
She produced a guy.
We...
I'm very excited to get to the house.
We're not having...
Poor girls.
All right, so y'all get back to work. It's good to see you.
Nothing more than a thousand milligrams.
Alright, what else we got?
Two alcohol beverage licenses.
license applications, public hearing. Will the City Clerk please sound the next item? Oh, they are loud. Join the group. Finish the wild committee down.
Our next item is...
Excuse me, Sootie, that's what happens when you mix an MDA committee with firefighters. They get wild out there. Go ahead.
Our next item is approval of issuance of an alcohol beverage license to Pia Charity Restaurant Group, LLC, doing businesses Mambo Jumbo Cafe at 5310 Windward Parkway, Suite E, Milton, Georgia. The applicant is Jorge Quisada for consumption on the premises of wine, malt beverages, and distilled spirits. Agenda item number 10-1185. Ms. Stacy English.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. The applicant has met all requirements of the city and the staff that recommend this alcohol beverage.
Okay, is there any questions for the council? Okay, do we have any public comment on this one?
Yes, sir, we don't.
Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and close the public hearing. And again, ask, is there any discussion, council? And if I don't have any discussion, do I have a motion in a second?
Mayor, I'll put forward a motion. I put forward a motion to approve the issuance of an alcohol beverage license to Piersa Restaurant Group, LLC, otherwise known as Mambo Jumbo Cafe at 5310 Windward Parkway, Suite E, Milton, Georgia. The applicant, Jorge Quisada, for consumption on the premises of wine and malt beverages and distilled spirits, Agenda Item Number 10-1185.
I'll second it.
I've got a motion by Councilmember Bailey, second by Councilmember Thurman. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous.
Thank you.
If our City Clerk will please call the next item. Stacy, you can stay right there.
Our next item is approval of the issuance of an alcohol beverage license to Bobby G's, LLC, doing business as Bobby G's Chicago Eatery at 12990 Highway 9, Suite 102, Milton, Georgia. The applicant is Carol L. Gray for consumption on the premises of wine and malt beverages. This is Agenda Item Number 10-1186. Ms. Stacy English.
This particular application is actually a transfer of location. The owner has already, already has an alcohol beverage license in their old location, which was off of Morris Road. They're moving on Highway 9 in the Aldi shopping center. So this is simply a transfer. They've met all the requirements of the city and the staff recommends approval.
Okay, any questions for staff, council? About, is any public comment, Sootie?
No, sir.
Okay, I'm gonna close the hearing and open up for a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the issuance of an alcohol beverage license to Bobby G's, LLC, DBA Bobby G's Chicago Eatery at 12990 Highway 9, Suite 102, Milton, Georgia. Applicant is Carol L. Gray for consumption on the premises of wine and malt beverages, Agenda Item Number 10-1186.
I second that. Okay, I have a motion for approval from Councilmember Lusk, with a second by Councilmember Longoria. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous again.
Thank you.
Stacy. There are no items on the zoning agenda or unfinished business, so we're gonna move on to new business. Will the City Clerk please sound the next item?
Our next item is approval of a memorandum of agreement between the City of Milton and Georgia, dealing on continuing our commitment to the flood map modernization program. This is Agenda Item Number 10-1187. Ms. Lynn Tolling.
As some of you may know, the D-Firm map modernization program, which is just meaning our map updates, have been going on now for the last approximately five years. We're simply asking for a memorandum of agreement to continue this program. We're almost to a close here. We anticipate seeing some maps approximately November timeframe, maybe January at the latest. This program, actually, the new maps would complement our aerial photography and our new topo lines as well and our GIS. So we're looking forward to getting those. Again, the memorandum of agreement is simply continuing that process and asking us to adopt the maps once they're completed.
Okay.
Are there any questions?
Any questions for Lynn? Yep.
Yes, sir.
What type of commitment are we obligated to, as far as funding or human resources?
There's no funding involved. We have attended a few of the meetings simply to stay abreast of the updates. And then also, once the digital elevation, excuse me, the digital data is received, we'll then incorporate that into our GIS data, but that's really the only staff time that's required.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, and then I'm gonna have a motion in a second.
I'd like to make a motion for the approval of a memorandum of agreement between the City of Milton and the Georgia DNR, continuing our commitment to the flood map modernization program, Agenda Item 10-1187.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, I've got a motion for approval from Councilmember Hewitt, second by Councilmember Bailey. If there's no discussion, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. Okay, I'm gonna move on to council reports before we go to staff reports. Is there anything that council wants to report on at this point? Yep.
Tomorrow's election day, don't forget to vote.
Okay. Any staff reports, Chris?
Just a couple before we go into executive session. Staff's knee-deep in the fiscal '11 budget preparation process. You should start to see some of that come forward at the August work session, so it's coming quick this year. We needed to come quick this year and get a budget done before we lose Stacy for a couple of months. So we're on expedited time schedule. We still don't have a tax digest, just to bring you up speed on that. We will require, we kind of will require a temporary collection over again this year, the third year in a row, so we have filled out the proper paperwork to be able to move forward with that process. And one of the big outliers out there that we're just not sure how it's gonna come in yet, although we have some anticipation of how it's gonna come out, is costs that are associated with our healthcare benefits. Employees, as well as those that draw insurance, have all filled out questionnaires. Now we're waiting on a renewal statement from our current provider. We will go to the market if we need to to figure out what makes the best sense for them. We've got a good team working on it, so we'll put together what we think is the best option, obviously, to present to you. But right now, budget, budget, more budget. Folks are spending lots of time doing that, and we need to, to get it presented to you. Couple other things I needed to communicate with you, I did it in writing, so you've got a letter there. If you would, just give us a look over the next couple days. I'm gonna see if you have any questions. I appreciate it.
Okay. If anybody worries Stacy, don't worry. Where you're gone, we're gonna call in Bob from Accountant, so he takes care of everything. From where? From Accountant. Bob from Accountant. Don't worry, Stacy, take a few more days. Bob's got everything handled. Okay, in our agenda, we had an executive session to discuss land acquisition, so...
Mayor, I don't mean to interrupt you, I would like to also add potential litigation.
Land acquisition and potential litigation. Do I have a motion to move into executive session for those two items?
Mayor, I don't have a motion if we leave the executive session to discuss land acquisition and potential litigation.
Wait a second. All right, I got a motion by Councilmember Thurman, a second by Councilmember Longoria. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
That's unanimous. Unanimous. Okay, do I have a motion that we could reconvene the meeting?
Mayor, I'll move to reconvene the meeting.
I'll second it.
Okay, I've got a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Do I have a, I'd like to adjourn the meeting, do I have a motion?
So good.
Second.
Got a motion and a second that we adjourn the meeting. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
That's unanimous. Six forty-four. All right, whatever.
Close enough.
Close enough.